For the February 19th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call.
Commissioner Corral.
Present.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Vice Chairman Kennedy.
Here.
Commissioner Seid.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Present.
Commissioner Sterling.
Here.
This is Commissioner President Scott and Kathy Smith is absent.
Thank you, Donna. Orl communications, this is the time that any member of the audience may come before the Planning Commission and speak your mind. We will not take any action and/or have any direct dialogue with you about those items you bring up due to the Jones Act. Now's the time to do that for any item that's not on our agenda. Not sending anyone come forward. Consent?
I'd make a motion to approve the one item on the consent calendar, the minutes of the last meeting.
We have a second that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please. We're using our keypad?
If it's blank, then go ahead and touch it.
There we go, all eyes, Scott.
Hey, general business, item number two.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Kelly Rabuffo, Contract Planner. First item before you this evening is a conditional use permit, variance, site plan, and coastal development permit to allow the interior and exterior remodeling of an existing restaurant, Micasita, including the installation of an elevator and the construction of a new roof deck in the commercial zone. Abutting properties represent a mix of commercial buildings and mixed-use buildings which have residential uses on upper floors. Surrounding uses include the Pavilion Hotel. There is a mixed-use commercial with residential directly to the south of the property. One 17 Clarissa. And then MDMK Fish House is also adjacent. The interior remodel would consist of an interior and exterior remodel of the building is approximately 4,498 square feet with construction of a new roof deck approximately 1,157 square feet. Key improvements focus on refreshing finishes, updating lighting, and improving pedestrian accessibility from Clarissa Avenue. The addition of the third-level rooftop dining deck would include seating for patrons as well as a bar to allow service of not just alcoholic beverages, but the entire menu of the restaurant would be available up there as well. Hours of operation for the restaurant in the interior are 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM Friday through Saturday. Hours of operation for the proposed roof deck and rooftop food service would be 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday. The restaurant currently operates with an ABC Type 47 license which allows sale of beer, wine, and liquor on premises sales only. The applicant is not proposing any changes to their existing ABC license except to allow the extension of sales to the roof deck if it is approved. As far as seating phasing for the restaurant, the restaurant currently has 182 seats distributed over two floors. Phase one of their seating plan would be to have 172 seats distributed over two floors in order to stay within the parameters of their existing water allocation for operations. And they have been placed on the Edison waitlist to go up to 190 seats once additional water is available. So Edison has confirmed that this project as proposed for phase one seating requires no additional allocation. And the applicant has provided detailed floor plans that show how seating will be arranged as part of each of these phases in compliance with that finding. The project has to comply with all the development standards for the C-zone. The applicant is requesting a variance for maximum height in this zone while the roof deck overall is under 28 feet in height because they are adding additional staircase access on an elevator for the rooftop. The variance would be required to allow up to a 29-foot, 6-inch height to the top of the staircase enclosure and up to 32 feet to the top of the elevator tower for the new elevator installation. So it's a maximum variance of four feet in height. Staff is recommending, to go back to what all the entitlements are, so the conditional use permit is required in this case for the use of the restaurant with the alcohol sales. So the restaurant has obviously been there since 1974, but when it was originally established, a CUP wasn't required at that time. Because they are expanding the service area at the restaurant and want to be able to expand the area of their alcohol sales, we added the CUP to this project so they would be able to make that request to alcohol beverage control if the project is approved. The variance has been requested for height. Staff, it is the opinion of staff that the variance can be granted in this case because it is limited in scope to just allow compliance to, accessibility compliance to the new rooftop. So the only things that require the height variance are the staircase and the elevator. All of the other improvements on the roof deck are under the maximum 28 feet in height. As far as rooftop deck operations go, as previously stated, the applicant is proposing to limit hours of operation to no later than 9:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday. The applicant is not requesting a special use permit at this time to allow amplified music. And consistent with existing code requirements, should they have a rent-out or event hosted on the deck area, they would be required to get a special event permit with approval of the city manager prior to anything like that. The applicant has stated in their project description they're not intending to host events up there, but a condition of approval has been placed on the project to confirm that should that change in the future, that would be the process they would have to go through to get approval. It's the opinion of staff that the limited hours of operation and the requirement for a special event permit is compatible with the intent of the commercial zone, which is our highest-intensity commercial zoning district, and should not cause undue noise nuisance to surrounding properties. In addition, the roof deck has been designed to be surrounded with a glass windscreen on top of the parapet wall, which would further cut down on potential noise. And the applicant has also arranged the placement of the elevator and staircases on the roof to provide a buffer between the rooftop and the residential to the south since there isn't an existing third-story residential unit with a balcony on that side of the property. In addition, the applicant will be required to prepare a lighting plan as part of their future building permits, the middle to also confirm that there will be no lighting pointed towards any adjacent uses and that all light is contained within the property so that that won't have light shining in people's windows. So with that said, staff is recommending approval of the project subject to all of the conditions and findings that you find in the staff report and also the resolution of approval. And the project has been determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to a Class 1 existing facilities. I am available for any questions, and also the applicant and their architect, Ralph Gentile, are also here to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any commissioner have any questions for staff before we open the public comment period?
Only thing I was thinking about is during the construction traffic, it's a small street, if they're going to do any demo or have landing zones, has that been maybe with architecture?
Yeah, at this time during the demolition, they are allowed to have a container in front for the debris from the restaurant, and they're allowed to have it there on non-cruise ship days from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM only. It'll continue through construction.
Okay, because I know that can be a tricky corner there with like, you know, big trucks coming through.
They have flaggers there as well, and they also block off the immediate other side of the street in front of the warehouse.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone want to speak for or against this project? Come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Ralph, excuse me, my name is Ralph Gentile. We're the design architects, restaurant architects, based in Los Angeles. My street address is 665 Lillian Way, LA. I am here on behalf of the Castillo family. We've been working on this project for a little while. As you know, Micasita is a family restaurant, not only for families, but run by a family. And we're very excited to be involved. If you have some technical questions or stylistic questions or anything, I'm certainly available to answer them. We are very excited about this project. We realize in looking at where it's located in Avalon, the opportunities for a restaurant to have exterior seating is very important. Many people come here and they don't, they'd like to not be inside, so that's where the roof deck becomes very important. They bought this restaurant just prior to COVID, so they've had a rough time of it, and it seems like a good, a good next chapter for this building for the family and for the community is to have a really nice restaurant on this spot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for this gentleman? Thank you. Anyone else care to comment?
So Vice Chair, while he's coming up, I also forgot to mention that prior to the public hearing this evening, we received 28 letters of support for the proposed application, which were provided to you at the DAS prior to the meeting beginning.
Thank you.
Hello, Planning Commission members. Some of you may know me already, but my name is Adi Casillas. I just wanted to come up here and thank you guys for taking the time to read over our project. This has been a long time coming, and we're really excited to be able to present it to you guys. The reason why we originally thought of having a rooftop deck is because on 4th of July, we host our company barbecues on the second floor, and when the fireworks were happening, we'd go up to the third floor and we'd be able to enjoy them. And we started thinking everybody should be able to enjoy this view. So we're really excited to be able to offer this to the community, to our guests. It's something new, unique, beautiful. I really love the view up there that we can offer to everybody. And like Ralph said, we've been operating Micasita since 2019. We survived through COVID, and now we're excited to offer something new. If you guys have any questions, me, my mom, and my sister are here. Thank you guys so much for hearing us out.
Thank you. Anyone else care to comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion.
Real straightforward and very clear about what their intent was.
I love the whole family business concept. I remember the, I'd been around a while, so I remember the Garcia family when they had it and Moises and the boys and doing their thing. And I remember when they enclosed that upper deck, you know, it went from one story to two, and now it's going two to three, so wish you the best of success. And yes, thank goodness COVID's behind us. Any other comments?
I'll make them approve.
Do we have? Do we have a motion and a second? Call for a vote, please.
Okay, we have all eyes, Scott.
Okay. Your next, congratulations, you guys. There's a handful of you, so we'll give you a moment to exit the room so you don't have to listen to the next laborious portion of this.
Congratulations.
The next item on our agenda.
So prior to Hayden introducing himself, I think at least one of our members is going to need to recuse themselves from the next two items.
That's it, my head in the back.
Yeah, so Scott, Sean Sterling, Commissioner Sterling is recusing himself from the next two items due to proximity.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commission. My name is Kayden Lykins. I'm an assistant planner with Sagecrest, and I'll be presenting these projects. So beginning with project number 2869 located at 41 Soul Vista, the project will require a site plan review and variance approval to excavate under the existing single-family condominium, creating a new 360-square-foot family room and bathroom. As mentioned, this site is located in the Soul Vista community at 41 Canyon Terrace Road, where the entire community as well as the site is zoned for multiple residential medium density with a general plan land use designation for medium-density residential. The project site is one of six two-story condominiums within one residential building. The unit currently contains a crawl space that is accessible via an at-grade door on the southwest side of the building, which is the rear. The project proposes to upgrade this crawl space into a 360-foot, square-foot, third-story that is partially below grade that will be accessed via an internal staircase from the existing main living level above. The existing crawl space does have a door on that rear side, and it will be replaced with a new door that is the same size and in the same location. And this door is to be used solely as an emergency exit out of the rear of the building. The project also proposes three windows on the left side of the building as well as a larger window in the rear of the building near the new door. None of these windows will have viewpoints into privacy of surrounding property. The existing crawl space currently does not qualify as a storey or basement. It's not a space with a floor or a ceiling. The city code doesn't have a definition for a level, but many levels consist of finished spaces like stories, basements, and even decks dependent on the configuration. The project site slope, the average slope of the project site is nine degrees. Construction of the lower-level bonus family room would result in the unit becoming three stories, which is not permitted based on the Avalon Municipal Code Section 9-5305E1I, which states on lots with an average slope of 14 degrees or less, no portion of the building may exceed a height greater than 28 feet above the lot's natural surface and shall not be more than two levels. This requires granting a variance to allow the proposed construction of the 360-foot family room. Staff's findings, with granting of a variance to allow the three-story residential unit, the proposed project will comply with all other applicable development standards, including the height and the floor area. Therefore, it will comply with the height and massing standards that are mentioned in the code. Additionally, other units in the Soul Vista community have previously been granted approval for a lower-level digout by the city, including 86 and 87 Soul Vista. Therefore, a strict application of the development standard would deprive the property owner of the opportunity to expand the size of their unit in the same manner as others did within the same community. The proposed project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per Guidelines 15301, Class 1, existing facilities. A public notice hearing was sent out and published February 7th, and there have not been any comments received. After a detailed review, staff recommends approval with the findings and recommendations outlined in the staff report and resolution. I am open to any questions the commission may have.
Anyone have questions for staff? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak for or against this proposed project?
Hi, everybody. My name is Martine, and I own the unit, but I don't know much about construction, so I have Leo over here with me. If you guys have any question, he have the answers. Thank you.
Anyone have questions for the applicant? Discussion? We'll close the public hearing? Any discussion? Anyone care to entertain a motion?
I'll give a motion to proceed with the project.
Do we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
We have all eyes. Scott and Commissioner Sterling has abstained.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Start digging. You guys want a half a second to leave the room, or are you guys going to stay for the next item? Oh, okay, perfect, all right. They call this teamwork. All right, staff report, please.
Yep, absolutely. So another project located in the Soul Vista community. This project will require, again, a site plan and variance approval to excavate under the existing single-family residents to create a 395-square-foot playroom and hobby room and bathroom. The project site is one of eight two-story condominiums with a residential building within one residential building and contains a very similar crawl space that is accessible via an at-grade door on the northwest rear side of the building. The project proposes to upgrade this existing crawl space that will be partially below grade and accessed via an internal staircase from the existing main level, living level above. The existing crawl space door will be replaced with a new door that will solely be used as an emergency exit out of the rear of the building. The project site average slope is seven degrees. Construction of the new lower-level build-out will result in the unit becoming three stories, which is not permitted per Avalon Municipal Code Section 95305E1I, which states lots on a, lots with an average slope 14 degrees or less shall not be more than two levels. In addition, the proposed additional space would increase the floor area ratio to 152% of the gross lot area, which is not permitted based on Avalon Municipal Code Section 95305E3I, which states on lots with an average slope of 14 degrees or less, the total gross floor area shall not exceed 150% of the gross lot area for properties with three stories. This requires granting a variance for a third story and maximum floor area to allow the proposed construction of the 395-square-foot family room. Construction of the proposed lower-level build-out and bathroom beneath the project will result in the unit becoming three stories and having a total floor area ratio of 152% of the gross lot area, which is not permitted based on the average slope being approximately seven degrees. However, the project meets all other development standards for a three-level building in the medium-density residential zone, including height and parking. The proposed space will be constructed entirely within the existing building envelope, and if required to comply with the code requirement of a maximum floor area of 150%, the proposed addition could cause structural design complications. Therefore, the addition will allow the most efficient construction of the addition and will comply with the existing height and massing standards, remaining visually compatible with the surrounding Soul Vista community. As mentioned, other units within the Soul Vista community have previously been granted approval for this lower-level third-story build-out, including 86 and 87 Soul Vista. Therefore, a strict application of the development standard related to average lot slope and the number of levels would deprive the property owner of the opportunity to expand the size of their unit in the same manner as other units within the same community. The proposed project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per CEQA Guidelines 15301, Class 1, existing facilities. Public hearing was sent out and published on February 7th, and there have not been any comments received. After a detailed review, staff recommends approval with the findings and recommendations outlined in the staff report and resolution. I am open to any questions the commission may have.
Questions for staff? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this item, either for or against?
My name is Ramon Alcala, and I tried to get this permit for a long time, and I live in 91 Canyon Terrace. And Leo, if you have any question, just make the question. I don't know what can I say. So.
Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay, no questions, I think we're good.
Thanks so much.
Pretty straightforward, just like the one before you. So we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion? Anyone care to entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, we got a dual motion. So we have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Who's going to be the motion?
I'll be the motion.
Okay. Are you going to be the second?
I'll be, I'll second.
Okay, and the motion is?
To approve the project.
To approve, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, everyone, for letting me do this project. And one more question, for how long time do I have this permit to start?
Three years.
Is there any limit?
Three years.
Three years? That's good enough. Okay, thanks so much, and have a good evening, everyone.
You too. You too. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for a vote, please.
Waiting on you.
Oh, waiting on me? Sorry, I was listening. I was engaged.
All eyes, Scott and Commissioner Sterling.
Are they going to get him?
Yeah.
I'm going to recuse myself because I live close enough to where it would be a conflict to the applicant. And since this is the last item on the agenda, I'm going to go ahead and depart.
So before we start this item, before you depart and head home, is there anything you would add to this meeting that you want to discuss tonight?
Yeah, I'm looking for a full-size FCV. I got a blue sticker, so if anybody knows, let me know.
Congratulations. You're officially a local. Waited a lifetime. Okay.
I'm in the market too, if anybody has one.
What, the sticker or the vehicle?
I have the sticker, I need a vehicle.
So Scott, Commissioner Hewitt has abstained due to proximity.
Okay. Who's up for this item? All right. Let's go.
Okay, this proposed project is located at 117 Vidallo Avenue, PC number 2875. This proposed project requires a site plan review, variance, and a coastal development permit approval to allow the construction of a two-unit residential building located at 117 Vidallo Avenue at the intersection of Vidallo Avenue and Upper Olive Street, generally known as the Hills. The project site is zoned for multiple residential medium density with a general plan land use designation for medium-density residential. The site is 5,432 square feet in size and is currently developed with a single-family residence on the northeastern portion of the site that stands at 117 Vidallo Avenue. portion of the site that stands at 1,385 square feet. There is also an 88-square-foot detached shed on the property. Neighboring single-family residences are adjacent on both sides, on both side boundaries of the site, in the front bounded by Vidal Avenue, and the rear bounded by an alleyway off of Marilla Avenue known as Hadley's Alley. The lot slopes downward from Vidal Avenue to the alley in the rear with an overall average slope of six degrees. There is an existing retaining wall that is approximately 34 feet from the rear property line. The applicant is proposing to develop two new units and an office at the rear of the property within a 1,343-square-foot, two-story residential building. The first story will consist of a one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit with a full kitchen, bathroom, living room totaling 525 square feet. The second story will consist of a one-bedroom unit with a full bathroom, kitchen, and living room totaling 657 square feet. The accessory office will be associated with the main single-family residence, but attached to the proposed building. The office will not be interconnected with either of the new dwelling units, and the office stands at 161 square feet. The project also proposes a new retaining wall that will either replace the existing retaining wall or be built to support the existing retaining wall. A fence will be put up between the second-story unit and the main resident outdoor space to create privacy between all units. In addition, the existing staircase in the rear of the lot will be replaced with new stairs to provide entry to the main residence from the rear of the property. The applicant prefers to seek approval for the entire proposed structure at once rather than submitting an application for only an ADU. If approved, the ADU will be reviewed separately with, separately and ministerially by the planning department in accordance with Avalon Municipal Code, Chapter 9-5, Article 6, accessory dwelling units. Issue items: The proposed project is requesting a variance to reduce the right-side yard setback to six feet and six inches in the rear of the property, and to reduce the rear setback by one foot. These reductions will allow the construction of adequately-sized units within the available space between the existing retaining wall and the rear property line. The existing right-side setback for the single-family residence is three feet and two inches, where the proposed building will have a setback of six feet and six inches from the right-side property line. The proposed left-side yard setback is 10 feet and remains 10 feet and compliant with requirements. The one-foot reduction in the rear setback only applies to the second story of the proposed building. The first-story ADU will maintain an 11-foot setback. Due to the location of the setbacks in the rear of the property, there is no expected effect, excuse me, there is no expected effect to neighboring properties and no effect to nearby traffic, congestion, and public safety. The proposed project meets all other development standards for the medium-density zone, including height, lot coverage, parking, and floor area. Staff finds, staff findings: Individually owned lots in Avalon compromise less than 1% of the total city acreage. As such, there's minimal available land for construction of new residential units to supply diverse housing options for long-term residents. Therefore, it is very important for residentially-zoned land within the city. Therefore, it is important to maximize the use of residentially-zoned land within the city, within the development parameters of each zoning district, so as long as it's consistent with the overall community character. The lot's existing retaining wall located 34 feet from the rear property line.
That was me touching that. Sorry.
I was like, is there a mouse in there?
I had a heart attack. I might do that soon.
The lot's existing retaining wall located 34 feet from the rear property line limits the construction of these additional residential units. In addition, the setback requirement, requirements also limit this construction, where variance approval will create feasible and efficient use of the space and allow the development to construct allowable density in the zone. Therefore, approval of the variance would not grant the applicant any special privileges inconsistent with the existing property development standards. The proposed project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, Guidelines 15303, Class 3, new construction or conversion of a small structure. A public hearing notice was sent out and published February 7, and there have not been any comments received. In addition, the applicant provided 3D images today prior to the planning commission meeting. These renderings were not in staff possession when reviewing the application. These renderings are present on your guys' desk. After a detailed review, staff recommends approval with the findings and recommendations outlined in the staff report and resolution. I am open to any questions the commission may have.
Questions?
I actually have to recuse myself. Realized it's Fine Line.
It's not actually gonna be Fine Lines.
Oh.
So, the, we got a correction after the staff report was issued, that it's the named applicant on the application is actually the trust that owns the property. So, Brian Tucker is not the applicant for this project.
Okay.
Neither is Fine Line.
Okay.
So, Tori Jones is here to answer questions regarding the design.
All right, and I usually catch it, and I just caught it. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it up.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak for or against this project? Come on forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tori Jones. I'm the project manager, or project manager. I'm the project designer for this property. And probably most of you might know, this was Pete's house. And so, it has a lot of meaning. The owners who live up north, they couldn't be here, but they have a lot of history with the island also. Becky Tavella's great-grandmother was born, raised, and died on Avalon. Her sister, her great-grandmother's sister lived here. There were, it was Inez Kellogg and Hazel Tucker. They have a house on 224 Catalina Avenue that's been in their family for over 100 years. The family's gotten so big that they were, had the opportunity to get Pete's house, and these plans are actually Pete's plans. So, we are planning to have both units rentals, full-time rentals, so we would, you know, be able to provide a little extra housing for the island. And if you have any other questions, I'm free to ask.
Any questions for the applicant?
She answered my question.
Okay.
Just one. What is the office gonna be used for? I mean...
So, right now, the owners, they have, the house is a vacation rental, which we'll stay that. But when the owners come, EJ works from home, so when he's here for a long period of time and all his family is there, he'll have a space to use it for. And in, I guess, full disclosure, we do have a request for water allocation for the upper unit to have two bedrooms, and for that office to eventually possibly be a guest room for the house. But if we can't, we can't. Then it'll just be, as of now, it's just gonna be an office for them.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion.
So, the, what, did I hear correct, that the two units up and down are proposed to be year-round rentals?
Yes.
Yes.
Both are to be full-time rentals.
And then there's one...
Office space.
One bedroom that's, or one room that is currently permitted by us as an office, and if additional water allocations were created, then they could expand the one-bedroom into a two-bedroom.
They'd have to go reapply for everything else if they wanted to make it a rental unit or...
If they want to convert the office space.
So, additional water allocations would be required for additional bedrooms in either unit, or conversion of the office to a bedroom. And just to, to further clarify for Commissioner Moremero, so accessory dwelling units, which would be the bottom unit, would be an ADU, are not allowed to be short-term rented by state law. But there is no necessarily any restriction that in the future, the top unit could apply for a TRL. There's this, but that's not what's being requested at this time.
No, they'd have to go through the process again and...
They would, that would be a separate application that would have to come forward in the future.
They just, do it now.
So, they're waiting for that, and when that, if that's granted and they choose to, they have to come back and start the whole process over, correct?
For...
For the additional bedrooms.
Actually, they would not need to do that.
Okay, so this, this is, we're approving what they're, what's in front of us, but they have the right when, so there's a condition?
Correct.
Okay.
So, sorry, Kayden. I know, he's doing so good in here. I'm interrupting.
Yeah, my understanding is their allocation requirements for an additional bedroom, if they wanted to change that, would have to get the water requirement for any kind of conversion or addition from, for the one-bedroom into a two-bedroom. This wouldn't have to go through a planning commission again. I believe it would just require a building permit.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone care to have further discussion and/or entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and we have a second. Call for a vote, please.
We have all eyes. Scott with Eric Hewitt Epstein.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
So, obviously, tonight was Kayden. Thank you for tonight's meeting. This was Kayden's first planning commission meeting presenting.
Congratulations.
So, we hit him with three projects at once. So, I think he did a great job this evening. So, I just want to let you guys know that...
Welcome, Kayden.
You're his first planning experience.
I'm excited to work with Avalon.
Anyone else have anything?
I would like to remind you guys about Form 700.
Oh, yeah.
April 1. Please get those in. If you have any questions, Gabby is available at the beginning of the week, and she can guide you through it.
Are those ones that are online that we have?
Yes, they are online this year.
And do it because Bart had a, didn't he?
Yes, and do it because...
It's a fine.
Fines, fines and classes. Not just fines, but you have to take a class.
How fun is that?
I can only imagine.
Well, I'd like to remind everybody that this weekend is the underwater cleanup, so come down and spot anything you might have, may have lost off a boat or a dinghy at the Dinghy Dock. We'll all be down there on Front Beach, Step Beach, and the Casino Dive Park.
When is it?
This weekend.
Well, I lost 20 grand underneath your boat, so if you find it, it's mine.
If I find it, you think I tell you?
You give me half.
Gotcha. All right, so Kayden, this is gonna surprise you, but we're gonna adjourn the meeting, and you're gonna have to find out from staff who Tony is.
Who Tony is?
Yep. This meeting's adjourned. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.